The two no-voting members need to explain their reasons. Doesn't need to be done tonight, but it would need to be in writing. That would then get attached to the decision and go back to the court. And that way, the judge would have something to go on and understand why this special permit was denied. So, that's where we are in a nutshell.
Thank you very much. Just a word of any questions for Justin on this? All understood? Okay. All right. We would like to have a motion to incorporate documents from the preceding hearing. John?
I'm here.
Sorry.
All right.
I move that we incorporate all documents submitted in the previous application number 24-03508 for 210 Turnpike Road into the new record.
Second.
Any questions from any board member? All in favor? Thank you, John. Jenny, do you have any additions or comments for tonight?
I would just comment in my memo, I did include the comments that we have received, including the letters from the abutters. And then, we did receive recently, on September 14th, another letter from William Lyons with Fort Hill Companies, and that was forwarded to the board.
Right. Justin, would you like the conditions that we discuss now, or would you like them later? You mentioned that Jenny...
Sure. Jenny, maybe it makes sense, I mentioned some potential conditions that had been discussed between council, and maybe if you just want to read those. Again, the board is free to consider those, free to consider none of them, or free to consider others. They're not binding in any way on the board. There just happen to be conditions that were discussed between myself and the applicant's council, in connection with the lawsuit.
Yeah, I can read those. So, it's my understanding that council for the applicant and our town council have discussed the addition of the following conditions to the existing conditions. The planning board shall conduct a review of the drive-through coffee shop one year after the commencement of business. The purpose of this review is to evaluate whether traffic queuing associated with the drive-through has resulted in incidents reported to the police department. If the board finds that there are no significant queuing incidents that have occurred, as reported by the police department, no further action shall be required. If the board finds that significant queuing issues have occurred, the applicant shall propose a mitigation plan for board approval. Based on its review, the board may require additional mitigation measures, which could include one or more of the following. One, the submission of an updated traffic study at the expense of the applicant. Two, filing a request for determination with Mast Dot for further improvements. Three, submitting in coordination with the town, a request for Mast Dot, or to Mast Dot for signage on Route 9 alerting drivers to the Park Street intersection, with the applicant cooperating and not unreasonably objecting to Mast Dot or town requirements. And/or four, widening the shoulder at the eastbound Route 9 approach to Park Street to improve the intersection's entry, subject to Mast Dot approval.
Thank you, Jenny. Yesterday, we received a report from an engineer hired by the Walker Meadow and other neighbors. I know this was sent to the applicants, or sent to the landowner's attorney, and to his engineer, and I'm wondering whether the engineer has anything they wish to comment on tonight. Is Mr. Malefante here?
Okay, so for the record, my name is Sam Alfranti. I'm a registered engineer in the Commonwealth. I'm here with solely engineering. Our offices are at 11 Vanderbilt Ave. in Norwood, Mass. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Six Humphrey Street Realty Trust. John Nichols is here tonight, the manager of that trust. As it's been discussed, but I know this is a new application, and there are some new board members as well, I'd like to kind of revert back to kind of where we started, if that's okay with the board. So, the property in question here is 210 Turnpike Road. It's on the westbound corridor of Park Street, southbound corridor of Route 9. It's about, just under a four-acre parcel. It's about half-developed, with a 7,000-square-foot office retail building. It was originally built as part of the restaurant that's located on the eastbound corner of Park Street, Route 9, and it was utilized that for some period of time. And it's kind of been an underutilized property since, I think, that, since at least John has owned it. The property is zoned highway business, which is the reasoning why we're here tonight, for the special permit for the drive-through use. And very much like the whole Route 9 corridor, a certain offset of Route 9, pretty much up and down that corridor, is zoned highway business, with very much a large number of transit-oriented business, drive-through uses, fast-food uses, coffee shop uses, in that zoning district. We'll point out as well that many of the abutters are here tonight. But very much like other areas in town, this commercial business district abuts very closely to single-family residence districts, and this is kind of a common theme throughout Route 9 and the whole quarter of Route 9 in Westboro. One thing I do want to bring to the attention of the board, and this addresses Hazel, some of the comments that you guys have received and Jenny has provided to us as well. This is an approved site plan. It was unanimously approved, the site plan was. So, comments relating to the location of the driveway, parking, circulation, not directly related to the drive-through use, have been approved. The site distance for the driveway, stopping site distance, intersection site distance, this has all been approved. The traffic study has been thoroughly reviewed by a third party hired, or requested by the board, hired by the applicant, I should say. And we went back and forth at extent through the previous applications, as you guys might remember. And this plan has evolved, and I think it was noted as well during the previous applications, this plan evolved quite a bit from the first time we presented it to you, taking recommendations from the board, adding signage, adding traffic pavement markings, to improve circulation, safety, delivery operations, and various things. So, here's the approved site plan, as a kind of a site rendering of that. As I mentioned, in existing conditions, there's about a 7,000-square-foot building that's retail office, I think it's utilized currently as a dental office with some component of retail on the second level, or the lower level, excuse me. In existing conditions, there are three curb cuts off Park Street, and that is something that is important, because in existing conditions, that furthest north curb cut is about 94 feet from the curb line of Route 9. And as part of the application, I'll spin back to the approved site plan, but the proposed project brings that driveway as close or as far south as possible that the zoning regulations allow. I believe it's 20 feet from the property line, the side property line, that we're allowed to have the driveway, and that was what was approved as part of the site plan. And that was a comment that stemmed from both the planning board, as well as GPI, the third-party reviewing engineer. So, what we're here tonight to discuss is the use of the drive-through. And the drive-through, it has been designed in accordance with the towns and the planning boards' drive-through regulations. We do have a 15-car queue. It's seven vehicles to the order point, and then we have a queue of eight vehicles beyond the order point to the start of the drive-through. Obviously, there is additional space within the limits of the site for additional queuing if that were to occur. It has a pickup window, an order point menu board, a pre-menu board. We have connectivity to the pedestrian path that exists on Park Street. There's a sidewalk right to the south of the property. It kind of ends at the existing southerly driveway. So, we're proposing to connect into that, and that provides pedestrian connectivity through the network that exists on Park Street. There's a crosswalk a little further south, that was part of the townhouse development, I believe, right to the south of this property. As I mentioned, there is ample signage and safety signage for pedestrian connectivity, pedestrian crossing, no standing on the crosswalk. These were all comments that were implemented as part of the design and really further enhanced our application through the third-party process. One thing that I think was discussed as well previously and submitted in the applicant, or the abutters engineer's comment letter, was regarding the trip distribution that was really guided by the third-party reviewing engineer. And that includes the implementation of this sign that actually directs further pedestrians that utilize, or customers of this facility, to exit the site right if there is a queuing on Park Street northbound, to utilize westbound via Milk Street to get to Route 9, as opposed to taking a right from Park Street and then making a U-turn at the intersection a little further east. As I mentioned, the drive-through, we submitted a detailed queue analysis, which was reviewed by the third-party as well, and commented on and revised accordingly. Our proposed queue, as I mentioned, is before the order board. It's eight vehicles. After the order board to the pickup window is seven vehicles, which the towns require, the towns' queue requirement is only 12 vehicles, and we're proposing 15. So, it's eight and seven, as opposed to eight and four, which is required. There was a comment, and I do want to address as I'm going through this, there was a comment submitted by the abutters that there was inadequate queuing on Park Street that would basically create a gridlock. And I just wanted to make it clear to the board that that is not true, based on our analysis. And we're proposing, from the stop bar of Park Street to our driveway, which, as I mentioned, is moving as far south as the zoning regulations allow for. We have a 225 linear feet of queuing capacity from the stop bar of Park Street to our site driveway. The worst conditions we evaluated was the weekday AM conditions, which makes sense as it's going to be a coffee shop. And our analysis shows that there's going to be a 6.3-vehicle queue, so we can call it seven vehicles, on northbound Park Street waiting to take a right onto Route 9. And that distance is 157.5 feet. This was reviewed and acknowledged by the third-party reviewer in our third comment letter. So, I did want to bring that to the attention of the board. Another comment that was raised by some of the abutters was inadequate site distance and the driveway location, which I mentioned. There is a fence that is located, it's actually located on the applicant's property, but it was installed as part of the southern development of the townhouses or condominiums to the south. But there's a fence that kind of extends right at the corner of the property line, and with industry standards of how you evaluate intersection site distance, you take it from a 15-foot offset of the travelway. At that distance, there is an available 156 feet of site distance. If the cars were to, or roll forward a little bit, as most people do when they drive, there's adequate site distance from a distance of nine feet from the travelway. One of the things that the abutters engineer failed to mention and recognize was, although the intersection site distance is 280 feet at nine feet back from the travelway, the stopping site distance for vehicles traveling northbound on Park Street is more than adequate, and it's greater than 220 feet. And that was something that the reviewing agent acknowledged the inadequacy of our site distance looking eastbound, or, excuse me, southbound. But they did recognize that the stopping site distance for vehicles on Park Street is more than adequate, which allows for, if there were to be an error from vehicles exiting the site, the stopping site distance provides for vehicles traveling northbound to engage the braking system and not have an accident. Our traffic analysis that was submitted, now, we evaluated this site as a coffee shop with a drive-through, and that's how it was evaluated. But we are proposing new trips, as any development does. The AM peak hour and the Saturday peak hour, those are the largest extent of the trips and the largest new network trips. We did utilize a 55% pass-by rate, which is industry standards for a coffee shop in accordance with the DOT regulations, and our traffic study was prepared in accordance with the DOT regulations as well. So, the Saturday and the AM are really the two numbers you want to look at here, and we're proposing about 58 enter new trips and 56 exit. Now, one thing to note here is every car that enters also exits. So, it's 58 enter, 56 exit during the peak hour and AM. Saturday is 58 enter, 58 exit. Our traffic analysts initially analyzed, I believe, only two intersections. We initially analyzed just the site drive and Park Street, and the turnpike road and Park Street intersections. As part of the third-party review process, they expanded our analysis and our evaluation, and we analyzed five intersections. So, it was the turnpike road, Park Street, site drive, Park Street, which also included the site drive of the commercial building across the street, Milk Street, Park Street, and then the turnpike road, Milk Street intersection. Now, this figure here is the level of service of all the intersections that we evaluated, and this is really the basis of our conclusion of our analysis. In the 2031 no-build versus build conditions of all of these intersections, the degradation of service, it's negligible compared to, for our development, when you're looking at it the scope of 2031 build and no-build. And that's something that I wanted to show here, because it is clear here that, so the 2031 no-build condition, so if the coffee shop were never to be built, the Park Street intersection with Route 9 operates in 2031, we're anticipating, as an F level of service, whether the coffee shop is built or not. We are proposing slight delays in these level of services, as there will be more traffic utilizing these roadways, but the justification for our analysis, that we do not feel as if this coffee shop will have a detriment to the neighborhood, as well as the intersection analysis that we provide.
Excuse me, let's be polite, please, to people that are making presentations.
Hazel, I just had a question real quick. On that previous slide, the three letters, are those for the AM peak, PM peak, and then Saturday peak?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. As part of the application, we submitted a very detailed drive-through queue analysis, which analyzed seven Starbucks across the Commonwealth, and we actually analyzed two additional sites as part of this application, which the third-party reviewer asked if we could do because of the increased volume on Route 9, although it is a divided highway. We did analyze additionally the Westboro Starbucks at 139 Turnpike Road, as well as the 100 Providence Road Starbucks in Norwood, Mass. Those daily volumes on those roadways are a little more aligned with Route 9, where we're proposing our project. And what we did is we evaluated these queues for hours, 14 hours total, so seven observations. And the average queue length that we observed was 7.9 vehicles across all of these locations. The maximum queue length across all of these locations was 11 vehicles. So, I want to bring that back. We are proposing a 15-car queue, exceeding the town's requirements for queue, and in our analysis, we only saw an 11-vehicle maximum queue across these 14 hours that we did observe. And then, I'd like to basically wrap up my presentation with just the special permit findings effect that were submitted. As I mentioned earlier, this site is in a highway business zoning district. We are asking the board for relief for the drive-through use, as it is an approved site plan already, which was unanimously approved. And this area is a densely developed area along Route 9. There are existing drive-through uses, transit-oriented uses, and convenient commercial uses. The project is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of that zoning district. And this property is really underutilized, in the sense of the commercial revenue for the town, and the revitalization of this property will not only bring economic but aesthetic improvement to the neighborhood and town. All utilities will be proposed to connect into the town's municipal water and sewer, electric and gas. Dimensional regulations in parking, as I mentioned, is unanimously approved site plan. We do not feel that the project will cause a nuisance or serious hazard, and we feel as if the information provided supports that. We have a very detailed traffic impact study, which has been peer-reviewed by GPI, as well as the town of Westboro engineer. We have adequate parking for the proposed operations. We have adequate onsite queuing, as I've explained, which is in compliance with the site plan review rules and regulations, as well as our queue. And as I mentioned, we are providing that connectivity to Park Street. So, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions or comments that the board has at this time.
So, as far as, so that has concluded your presentation, and you will not be submitting any written, but the oral will be sufficient. Is that correct?
What was the question? Sorry.
Your presentation tonight, which is oral, you will not be permitting, you will not be submitting any more written material to the board concerning this application.
No, I don't believe, I feel as if everything that we have has been submitted and thoroughly reviewed, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any board members?
Yeah.
John?
Your presentation incorporated the abutters engineer's work. Just want to confirm.
Yeah, so the...
The one that was submitted on the 14th?
Correct. Yes, I did receive that. Jenny forwarded it to me. So, the abutters engineer had more or less three comments, what it boiled down to. One was relating to site distance with the driveway, which, as you guys know, is that location, whether the drive-through use there or not, is an approved site plan. The other one was relating to site distance, the traffic queuing on Park Street, which I explained in detail. And then, the third one was the interplay of onsite and offsite traffic queues. As I explained, with the significant queuing capacity on the northbound lane of Park Street, I don't feel as if that analysis is really needed or warranted with our excessive queue exceeding the town's regulations, exceeding any of our queue analysis that was submitted. I don't see how it's really relevant to that. So, no, we won't be submitting any formal written response, but I feel as if this presentation has adequately responded to those.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions from any board members?
I have a couple.
John?
Has the site plan changed at all since it was approved? Yeah, okay. I think we covered this at the end of the last hearing. The coffee shop use, is it a byright use? It's the drive-through that's the special permit. How many trips, I guess, peak time, whether it's AM, PM, or Saturday, would a byright coffee shop without a drive-through generate?
Yeah, so we, I anticipated this coming up, because in the kind of the last hour, you mentioned that comment, and I was trying to scramble to digest the data, I guess. So, very recently, when we did our traffic study, it was based on the 11th generation, or 11th edition IT trip generation. Since then, they've issued a updated copy, which is the 12th edition. Usually, what it does is it takes out older traffic studies and replaces it with newer information. With that being said, the coffee shop with a drive-through, the AM peak hour, we're anticipating 205 total trips. The PM peak hour, we're anticipating 94 total trips. And the Saturday peak hour, we're anticipating 178 total trips. Now, that's with a drive-through. Without a drive-through, the AM peak hour, we're at 218, PM peak hour at 76, Saturday peak hour at 134. Now, with the 55% pass-by...
Hold on, can I just clarify? So, did I just hear that right, that the byright non-drive-through has more trips than the AM peak hour?
Correct. The IT numbers, that's, yeah. So, the, really, the two hours that you can base this on, and I have a justification and a potential reasoning for that, too. So, the PM peak hour, you see, it's a 23% increase in trips with a drive-through. For the Saturday peak hour, you're at 32%. And what that boils down to is eight new trips and 20 new trips. So, you're talking four in, four out, 10 in, 10 out. So, it's, I'm not going to say it's negligible, but it's a very small number comparatively to the use of just a coffee shop. I spoke with our traffic engineer on the AM peak hour, because it doesn't really make sense. You're like, oh, with a drive-through, there's actually less trips, based on this empirical data. That doesn't make, doesn't compute, really. But his justification for this and his reasoning, and I somewhat agree with him, during the AM peak hour, these facilities are operating at basically their maximum output, right? So, the difference, whether it has a drive-through, doesn't have a drive-through, they're seeing their maximum capacity during those hours. So, the difference between them is basically negligible, is what that data kind of supports. But as I mentioned, the PM peak hour, Saturday peak hour, we're roughly between a 23 and 32% increase with a drive-through, as opposed to not with a drive-through.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any board members? All right. Thank you, Mr. Malefante.
Would you like this? Me? Okay. I was saying, do you want this up?
Stay up here with this?
No, I think you can take it down. All right, I'd like to open the hearing for public comments. I would like to say that I would like people to keep their remarks to a minimum of two minutes. I realize that there is an attorney here for the abutters, and I will certainly be more lenient with him as far as the two minutes go. I would also appreciate you trying not to repeat what other people have said. We've received a great deal of correspondence on this. We have heard it talked about by the public a number of times. So, we're looking really to see if there's any new information which you can bring to the planning boards to be able to make our decision.
Two minutes.
What?
You said the minimum of two minutes, but the maximum of two minutes.
A maximum of two minutes, sorry. The difference as far as that goes. All right, we're open for...
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Attorney Sean Regan. I represent the villages at Walker Meadow and Park Place condominium, which is the condominium on Stagecoach. We are here tonight because we believe the original decision to deny this permit was correct. We've retained an independent traffic expert, William Lyons of Fort Hills Company, who submitted an affidavit, report, letter, expressing his opinion based on the applicant's traffic study to you. And basically, what we have here is a situation where the two experts disagree. I'm not qualified to dispute the legitimacy of any of the data that was put forward here tonight. However, I would request that the board trust their gut. I know at previous board hearings, that was a topic of conversation, that the board, in their gut, didn't feel like this was a safe place for a drive-through. And at the last hearing, there was no expert opinion to back that up. You now have that, and though the applicant's expert disputes the abutters expert, it is your job to make that decision of which is more credible. You are not to rely solely upon the applicant, but you are vested with the authority to make that decision in the best interest of the community. And we believe the best interest of the community, the immediate abutters... And we believe the best interest of the community, the immediate Abutters at Park Place and at Walker Meadows, is for this drive-through to be denied. Based not just on the three reasons that were included in the opinion, I should ask, have you all had a chance to read the opinion?
Yes, we have.
Okay. There are a number of other deficiencies, and again, I'm not qualified to speak on those, but those are just three that affect the immediate Abutters in Park Place and the villages at Walker Meadow. Again, I, I'm not qualified. However, I will just point out that it is legally untenable to rely upon people rolling through a stop sign in order to justify a legitimate site view to, to comply with the, the requirements of the town. So we would ask you, we would ask the board to exercise your discretion and maintain the denial that you previously voted. The application violates express town standards where the project where drive-throughs must not impede or impair vehicle or pedestrian traffic movement. And by the applicant's own traffic study, it will quadruple delays on Park Street. And also, all designs must improve safe site distances in accordance with AAS HTO requirements. Yet, the required 335-foot site distance cannot be achieved due to the obstructions specifically cited by the applicant's engineer here tonight. The applicant's own traffic study shows the project will create 223-foot traffic queues that block the site exit, forcing dangerous driving maneuvers and creating gridlock conditions that our expert analysis confirms will lead to hazardous conditions with highly increased likelihood of crashes. The applicant has provided no credible engineering solution to these safety deficiencies. Their proposal, their proposed pull-forward, roll-forward 12 to 13 feet solution contradicts basic traffic engineering principles and cannot be enforced or guaranteed. Since the applicant cannot demonstrate compliance with the mandatory safety standards and their own evidence shows the project creates dangerous conditions, they have failed to meet their burden for special permit approval under Massachusetts law. It is not in harmony with the neighborhood and creates unsafe circumstances for the immediate Abutters, specifically Park Place and Walker Village, who will be essentially locked in their condominium properties throughout the day and especially at peak hours. So we would respectfully request that this board vote to deny the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please just give your name so that it can be understood, as we need to keep a record of this.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, town planner and town council. My name is Dexter Boyce. I'm a fourth-generation resident of Westboro, currently at 23 Deerfield Way. With this application, a condition peculiar to the particular case but not generally true for similar permitted uses on other sites in the same district exists. 100% of traffic entering and exiting the lot does so by way of residential street. All traffic and other drive-throughs in Westboro along Route Nine in the district enter and exit by way of direct access to and from Route Nine, or through a parking lot with direct access to and from Route Nine. A similar site, the Exxon station at 183 Turnpike Road, Route Nine West, has its egress and ingress by way of Route Nine, even though it has a driveway to Oak, Oak Street. The Oak Street driveway is an emergency use only because it leads to residential neighborhoods. Allowing the proposed coffee shop to have a drive-through which uses a residential neighborhood for all its traffic is a derogation of the intent of the bylaw and an allowance for something in the district, customers using a residential street to enter and exit the business, which previously was discouraged and/or denied by this board. And I have a question that I'd like you to think about, doesn't necessarily require an answer tonight, but I wonder how the board can justify allowing the drive-through at this location when no other drive-through in the same district operates similarly, sending all its traffic entering and exiting, exiting through a residential neighborhood? If you grant this special permit, could the Exxon station or others on Route Nine with access to residential neighborhoods petition the planning board for a special permit to use its driveway to Oak Street for entering and exiting traffic? And would the planning board be unable to deny such a request because of the precedent set at this location if the special permit is granted?
Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you.
No. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Tom Wolfe. I live at 11 Stagecoach Circle, right off Park Street. And one of the things I'd like to address tonight is the nuisance part of this whole, what I would consider a debacle. I'm not going to address the safety issues, I'll leave that to others, but I would like to remind the board that the operating hours are going to be between the hours of 5:00 AM and 10:00 PM, seven days a week. Now, the, the peak hours we're expecting are going to coincide with the, the students and schools that are, that are going to be in session, and there are school buses that come up and down Park Street. Park Street is a very narrow street. There's, it's a two-lane road, and it has a wide curve in it. I would like the board to consider, if they haven't, that according to the records that we have and what I've looked at, the estimates are going to be between 80 and 105 vehicles an hour going to the coffee shop. And with a little math, if we look at the fact that between Park Street, I'm, I'm sorry, along Park Street, between Route Nine and Milk Street, it's about a third of a mile. And using Solly's own numbers for the average size of a car with a little distance between, they came up with a number of 20. And if we do the math, 1,530 feet divided by 20 is like 70-plus cars. If you stack these cars end to end, that would be complete gridlock. And I'm not suggesting that we'll have that situation, but I would suggest that you think about the fact that even if it's half of that, if you have half of that going northbound and southbound, it would only take one car to jam up the whole thing. And we're not even talking about the entrance from Route Nine eastbound.
Mr. Black, if you could finish up?
I would like to say that there's 181 residences between my, our group, well, Park, Park Place condominium and Walker Meadows. And that roughly converts to about $1.5 million worth of revenue for this town. And I, for one, probably wouldn't stick around, and I'm just speaking for myself, if in fact this goes through. And I would like for the board to understand, this property was purchased in 2003, and at that point, it had no egress or ingress at the time. And knowingly, and knowing that, at this point, you, you know, I, I don't understand why the board would go ahead and consider this, in particular, the nuisance it's going to cause. And I, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Nancy Castelli, 12 Hancock Way. Granting a special permit for a drive-through at this location creates a hazard. It creates a hazard. The traffic impact study collision, collision analysis used data from the years 2019, 2020, and 2021 as a baseline for crash data. The years used as a baseline align perfectly at the height of the COVID-19 pandemic and lockdowns. And the fact is, no matter where you lived during those years, there wasn't much traffic. Now, I understand Solly may be required to use certain years as a lookback on traffic. And I'm sure there are rules when producing traffic studies. However, when contacting Mass DOT, we found there were other, more recent collision numbers available when that traffic study was conducted. So just something for you to think about. Don't you think in this case that the newer, more applicable numbers for Mass DOT, which showed a significant drop in traffic during the COVID years, should have been footnoted or used to project collisions from Route Nine East at the intersection with Park Street and the adjacent roadway sections? I think for clarity and transparency's sake, these numbers should have been presented. They were available then, and they're still available today. There is a significant difference in the outcome as presented by Solly versus the actual post-COVID numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Phyllis Jaffe, 9 Quaker Way. Granting a special permit for a drive-through creates a hazard. Park Street is a narrow street with no curbing, no continuous sidewalks, and has a dangerous blind curve where it passes Western Village Way. The town posted it as a dangerous curve. Whether traveling north or south on Park Street at Western Village Way, the driver is unable to see oncoming traffic. Many times, those turning onto Western Village Way to go to their homes are confronted with a speeding vehicle or large truck traveling too fast, or are surprised by the oncoming traffic. This creates hazardous conditions. Can you imagine what this problem will be like if we go from limited traffic to 100-plus vehicles per hour during peak times six days a week? It's going to be gridlock. Additionally, if anyone parks along the street to visit the coffee shop or someone who lives in the neighborhood, one or the other lane will be shut down as the street is not built to accommodate parking on the street. This is extremely hazardous. With little traffic today, it is an inconvenience as one waits for a vehicle in the opposite lane to pass. With 100-plus cars an hour, there will be nowhere to go or wait if one has to make allowances for street parking. Gridlock is the only result. I have a question for the board. In the event this special permit is granted, how do you propose to resolve the gridlock and resulting hazardous conditions that will result by allowing the applicant to do what is not allowed anywhere else in the district? Specifically, the requirements that all customers enter and exit a residential street.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment this evening?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Jenny, Department Ed. My name is Bill Lanain, also a fourth-generation here in town. I live at 21 Deerfield Way. If the special permit for a drive-through is granted, the Park Street and Route Nine East intersection and the intersection of Park Street and Milk Street will be unsafe for vehicle travel and pedestrians. During the January 27 hearing, Solly Engineering produced a revised traffic study, and it appears at that time, they agreed the increased traffic would make the Route Nine East to Park Street turn almost impossible. And with the intersection going from a level of service of, according to the state, DCC, to an FFF, with the F being the worst rating. They also reported the intersection of Park Street and Milk Street will change from CCC to DEE, just one grade above the worst rating possible. In its February, February 21st letter regarding comments on the traffic study, PGI, the town's peer review consultant, said that without a deceleration lane prior to Park Street, that's on Route Nine, to allow for a safer turn to Park Street, Route Nine, they expected an increase in rear and side swipe accidents. This speaks volumes about the lack of safety at this intersection and along Route Nine East as the cars stack up to turn onto Park Street. Sightlines for drivers are eliminated when the intersection is at gridlock. We all see that. No one will be able to take a right or a left out of the parking lot. A question for the board. When Solly's own reporting tells us the traffic will be horrible at both ends of Park Street, causing significant traffic issues during peak hours six days a week, how can you justify providing a special permit for a drive-through which is the reason for the increase in traffic congestion at these two intersections? I ask you to deny the request for a special permit.
Thank you, Mr. Lanain. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Hello, I'm Ken Kelly, 10 Hancock Way, Westboro. My wife and I live in the Walker Meadow 55-plus community, very close to the pedestrian walk, crosswalk across Park Street. And our unit backs up on the proposed route for Section 3 of the BWAL shared-use path. I am also the convener of the new local organization, Friends of BWAL. As the planning board reconsideres whether to deny this permit application, I encourage you to consider the safety parameters of the vastly expanded pedestrian and bike traffic that will be crossing Park Street in both directions once the BWAL shared-use path has been completed. The vehicle congestion and serious backups created by a coffeehouse drive-through at this location are reason enough to deny the special permit. But please think ahead to how much worse it will be once BWAL and its Sections 2 and 3 intersection on Park Street have been completed. Picture frequent road crossing attempts by adults and children, walking, jogging, and biking, both east and west, some bikers dismounting to cross, others not dismounting, trying to dodge in-between frustrated drivers jammed bumper-to-bumper on Park Street. This is a recipe for injury or death to BWAL users, with accompanying lawsuits against the town, the coffeehouse owners, and local drivers seeking a safely obtained cup of coffee. While the likely flashing pedestrian crosswalk light to be installed here may somewhat reduce pedestrian risk, its impact on enhancing the vehicle traffic jam will be huge. Please deny, again, this special permit.
Thank you. A gentleman over here?
My name is Greg Michel. I live at 8 Quaker Way, Walker Meadow. I just wanted to make some more comments on the subject of safety, particularly on the intersection of Route Nine and Park Street. In the last hearing on March 4th before the vote, one of the members stated that if we don't approve this, this special permit, the town will be sued. Another member said something to the effect that no matter which way this goes, someone is going to bring suit. That could well be the case. However, I think they missed the point at that meeting. If you're considering a yes vote on the special permit, it's missing the big picture. If you approve the special permit with all the evidence in front of you from Solly, GPI, and members of the neighborhood, the neighbor, with the neighborhood about the congestion and safety concerns caused by this drive-through. When they backup, when the backup occurs on Route Nine and vehicles decide to leave the line waiting on Route Nine or in the queue on the, on the street, when they re-enter traffic, they, there could be multiple vehicle accidents. And if there is bodily injury, the owners aren't just going to pull over and say, let's exchange information. They are going to sue the town for knowingly approving an unsafe grounds of a special permit for the drive-through at this intersect- permit for the drive-thru at this intersection. The evidence is right in front of any good lawyer to find and take advantage of this fact. For the town, if this is approved, the town gets a gift that will keep on giving. Court cases and endless bodily injury claims could ensue. Anyone who watches TV knows there's no shortage of injury lawyers in the Worcester area. In fact, it's rather prophetic that about one-half mile down the road is a billboard advertising Morgan &amp; Morgan, the largest injury firm in the United States. So my question for the board, with all this evidence in front of you, much of it produced by your consultant and underscored by Solly's data, how can you even consider allowing this special permit for a drive-thru?
Thank you.
Wayne Webster, 3 Essex Way. I had something written down here that I was going to read, and what struck me is what we're doing here is we have battling traffic engineers and a lot of technical information. What I thought I would do instead is paint a picture for what's happening and will happen there, based on the numbers that we've been presented with. Now, I want you to just think about the fact that we'll have about 100 cars coming down Route 9 East, turning onto Park Street, which you can do at about 15 miles an hour, otherwise you end up in the pent-up lot. So they're coming down Route 9, turning onto Park Street, going about 200 feet while the traffic is backing up on Route 9. It happens there. Take a turn into the lot and immediately take a 180-degree turn to get into the queue. Since there's just one driveway for entrances and exits, that's a bit of a problem for the people who are exiting. Now, there's a smaller number of cars, but a large number for Park Street, coming up from Milk Street in peak hours. That's estimated at about 80. And those cars are coming up, and they're turning left into that same drive. All of a sudden, the people who are in that parking lot trying to come out can't come out. That's what the traffic engineer talked about, gridlock. At the point at which everyone is going in and out in the same driveway or attempting to, that's the gridlock, and that's when everything backs up on Park Street. Park Street is 3/10 of a mile long. The prediction is that when it starts to back up, no one on Park Street will be able to use their driveway. Two times a day, six days a week, for somewhere between 2 and 3 hours. That seems unjustifiable and just plain unfair. So I asked myself, as a technical person, I said, "This just can't be right. There's got to be something wrong here. What is it that's causing all this traffic?" It isn't all the people flowing in from Route 9 and Milk Street and all of that. You know, it really isn't. It's the size of the lot. We constantly talk about this parcel, this 3.9-acre parcel.
Mr. Webster, could you wrap it up, please?
I will wrap it up when I'm ready, and it'll be soon. We talk about this 3.9-acre parcel. When you look at the parking spaces, Solly says they have sufficient parking spaces, 40% of those parking spaces are down behind the existing building, down the slope and behind the existing building. Once that lot fills up, and it will, based on the numbers that are coming up and down the street, there's no way you have anything other than gridlock. I ask you, please, take into account that neighborhood. This is the only business that would release all of its customers, allow them to come in on a residential street, and force them out onto a residential street. No place else in this district does that. Please vote against it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anand Lele. Me and my wife live at 7 Lenox Way in Westboro. I would like to briefly share my thoughts with the planning board. A lot has been said by many people, so I need not repeat any of that, except I would like to point out to the planning board that a planning fallacy described in Lakshmi's letter of 8th of September, namely, "No drive-thru should channel traffic through a densely populated residential neighborhood consisting of elderly people as well as family with small children." The Board of Trustees at Walker Meadow have put together a very articulate and convincing argument as to why the board should deny the special permit for this project in a later date, 8th of September, with an Exhibit A attached to it. Myself and my wife fully agree with the contents of that letter and Exhibit A. A lot has been said about this study and that study and that study, so on and so forth. As a special request, if you can put up that site plan up, it would be great. I would like to urge all the board members to pretend that you are at the site one more time, one more time. Near the white fence at the edge of the property, you can hear the traffic on Route 9 East. Now visualize the coffee shop on the property with an existing building and two driveways and this and that, as all of you can come to the same conclusion as all of us have, that granting a special permit for a drive-thru at a congested site create tremendous confusion, chaos, and monumental gridlock on Park Street. I urge all of you to think hard of the consequences before you cast your vote on the final decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Hazel. Can I make just a comment?
Sure.
So I understand this is an emotional issue right now, and people are amped up. But I'm sorry, Mr. Webster, that comment to the chair was disrespectful, and I don't appreciate it. She was very polite to you. She has allowed two minutes for everybody. You are not any different than anyone else in this room, and for you to decide when you're done talking versus anyone else is disrespectful. Excuse me, Mr. Webster, that was disrespectful, and I don't appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Hazel. Attorney also said, "If everyone could please turn off your cellphones, because there's been a lot of those going off as well." It's a little disruptive.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to say that the acoustics in this building are so bad that I have tried to understand everything that everyone has been saying, and I'm finding it impossible. But I do know that everyone here from my development, Walker Meadow, we're old people. We don't hear well. I moved to Walker Meadow a few years ago with the intention of staying until I die. I'm an old person, and I love it here.
Excuse me, ma'am. If you're making comments, we need your name and address, please.
Oh, Carol Kelly, 10 Hancock Way. "Last week, I needed an ambulance. If a traffic backup had been on Park Street, the ambulance could not have gotten to me or been able to take me to the hospital. Please consider this when making your decisions."
Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Tom Persher. I live at 1 Shaker Way. I'd like to share with you a couple little things. If you've ever been on Park Street trying to enter Route 9 to go eastbound, it takes a good 20 minutes to get out because of traffic coming down the road. The same thing happens if you go the end of Park Street right now, trying to turn onto 135 on the Milk Street, going either right or left. You virtually can't turn left because the cars are just coming around that bend so quickly that you're almost forced to go to the right. All I'm trying to suggest to you is that we already have issues in the neighborhood as it is now. What is being suggested here makes no sense at all to me. I feel bad for the owner of the property. However, he bought the property in 2003. You know, it's not my responsibility to make his property profitable for him at my expense, particularly for something he bought many, many years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to comment on this application?
My name is Bill Mills. I live at 15 Sheffield Way. I agree with the comments from my fellow neighbors, and that Park Street intersection is a dangerous intersection. My driving habit, if I'm coming down, if it's raining, snowing, or heavy traffic, I don't take that. I take Milk Street. It's a little longer because cars are coming over there. It's a 55 mile an hour speed limit. It goes from three to two lanes. The cars are jammed together, and it's dangerous, and I choose to avoid that. Now, your people don't know it going in there. We're going to have a lot of accidents there based on the speed of the traffic. We all know people don't do 55 miles an hour in rush hour. The other comment I have is this place is zoned a highway business district, but the access is 100% residential. How does it qualify for highway business? If it had access to Route 9, none of us would be here. But it's access to a residential street that's narrow with a very tough intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to comment on this application? All right. If not, is at the pleasure of the board.
I just have a question for the town council. If we have further questions for the applicant, if we close the public hearing, would they still be able to answer them?
No.
Can I ask just one question to the applicant? The site distance for the driveway and the issue with the site distance, is that related to the fence that's in place? Is the fence... Or you can speak there.
Can you just pull the microphone closer, please?
Make sure the mic is on. Sorry.
I think it's good now. The fence that exists on the southerly property, the last panel of that fence is kind of a... it has holes in it. I'm not sure. As part of the previous application, I requested all the information from that development to really understand what the purpose of that was. It wasn't clear. But the issue with the intersection site distance looking northbound, if you are exiting the driveway, is in relation to that. Now, under ASHTO and MUTCD standards, you measure site distance from, like I mentioned earlier, 15 feet from the travelway of the roadway. We don't have adequate site distance from that, intersection site distance, at nine feet, which is six feet forward. So at that point, your front tires would be over the stop bar, but your car would not be in the travelway of Park Street. We have more than adequate site distance, and that was really the back and forth with GPI that we had, and they were relatively satisfied with that level of site distance in addition to the adequate stopping site distance for vehicles traveling northbound on Park Street, that they felt comfortable with those two.
Yeah, I guess my question is, is the fence the obstruction for the site distance issue looking south?
It is, yeah.
And this fence is on your property?
It isn't, but it is based on our survey on our property, on John's property, but it is not, it was not constructed by John.
It was constructed by the project next door.
Correct, right. But so it's on your property. If it's... But I'm saying, if it's on your property, can you take it down? Or ask the butler to move it if they installed it incorrectly?
It's really that last panel is, I guess, the problematic panel.
If that will solve the site issues, then, you know...
We could certainly ask. I mean, it's located on his property. I'm not sure if he wants to get into a property law dispute.
I understand. I'm just saying, you know, if that's the thing that is the biggest danger, and it's on your property, and you have the right to take things that were installed incorrectly on your property.
I don't have a problem at all.
All right.
I think that would just create a land dispute. That's the first we've heard of it tonight, being on his property, so that presents a whole new issue that we would have to go to court to decide that. Just put that out there.
No, not necessarily, but okay. Sorry, did you?
All right. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just one. Can you remind us, you said, what was the data between a drive-thru versus just a buy right coffee use with no drive-thru?
Yeah, so it's roughly 20% to 30% increase in trips.
Which is, can you... How many cars?
In the PM peak hour, it's eight new trips, which is four in, four out. And then the Saturday peak hour is 20 new trips. Now, I'm talking about new trips, so trips that this coffee shop would generate as opposed to existing. And then the Saturday peak hour is 20 new trips, which was 10 in, 10 out. So it's a 23% to 32% increase when a coffee shop has a drive-thru as opposed to not having a drive-thru.
And all these numbers are going down.
Are there any other questions to the applicant?
Yeah, so just clarifying. So the reason, is the reason that the AM no-drive-thru hire because they were looking at averages across multiple locations? And is that like, is that why?
So what this... This is the Institute of Traffic Engineer trip generation. It's empirical data that they look at thousands of sites across the country. It's not a specific tenant. It's not a specific location. Like, some have drive-through, some are multiple entrances, some are multiple... It's a variety of things. In general, though, what the data shows is that with a drive-thru or without a drive-thru, the trip generation is negligible because these facilities in the AM peak hours, I mentioned, kind of operate as, and this is our assumption, they operate at max capacity.
Right.
Which makes sense for when people drink coffee, is typically in the morning during the AM peak hour, so.
Okay.
But yeah, it's a variety of sites across the country. It's thousands of traffic studies is what it evaluates.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have something you wish to add? You spoke earlier.
Sorry?
You spoke earlier. Is there something?
I did. It's a different question.
Who is the question for?
For the town council.
If you have a question for the town council, go ahead.
I just need a clarification. You mentioned some possible changes, one of which was granting the special permit and then reviewing it over a year's period of time. Is that...
Yeah. I believe that was one of them. That was one of the conditions, the new conditions being proposed.
So that is part of what you're considering now?
The board can consider any condition.
Well, I understand.
Those were four specific ones or three specific ones that had been discussed informally between myself and the applicant's attorney in connection with the lawsuit. I don't have them in front of me. I sent them to Jenny. She could read them. But yeah, they can consider all those, none of those, other ones. It's really the ball's in the board's court.
Would it be legitimate for me to assume that that's certainly one of the topics that the board would be considering?
I can't answer what the board's going to do.
I mean, you've put it into their...
It was... Let me put it this way. It's communicated to the board, and they're aware of it.
That's all I want to know. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other questions by board members to the applicant?
All right. I move that we close the public hearing?
There is...
Second.
All in favor? Okay. The public hearing is now closed. We will be looking at all the information we've received, review the documents, and we will, at our next meeting on October 7, will be looking to vote on our findings and our decision at that time. I would ask that anybody that's here for this matter, if they are not going to stay for the rest of our agenda, would they please leave quietly? And we'll take a two-minute recess.
Do we want to continue the hearing? I move that we continue the hearing until October 2nd.
Oh, sorry. We close the public hearing. I don't think I'll do anything.
We have to continue. Little decision? All right. All right. Yes.
We close the hearing. Yes.
For the actual newspaper advertisers for the project, I think we up to all that stuff. I just didn't know if it's the actual running ads. Maybe ask Jenny. Or is there any way you can...
As long as you do the voting. Can't wait to scan.
No, I think hearing needs to be...
Do you guys need me for this?
No. We give this first, and you can leave when you're in charge of the hearing.
It was nice meeting you, by the way, personally. We'll be in touch soon.
Thank you.
It was nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Justin.
Yeah, we just need a coffee.
I love this guy. I don't want any, but I was giving him a swag, grabbing it for like nine.
People, please leave the meeting room as we have other business we wish to carry on. If you wish to talk about this, please talk outside. If you wish to talk about this, please talk outside.
Oh, but if we do, like, I would want to, I can't do my head. So it's like basically the same, we set it on one side.
Yeah, I think we should change it.
You could use that half here. Okay, great, thank you. Got it. Got it, thank you.
All right, I think I'll reach. I'd like to continue our meeting. Excuse me. I'd like, I'd like to continue our meeting. Thank you. The next application is 30, I'm sorry, 50, Flanders Road.
But he's going to set up if he wants to go ahead and open up.
Oh, okay. If I can find my paper.
Are the doors back there closed? Are they just that loud?
No, they're looking at the hearing devices too.
We do need to do something about the acoustics in this room. It's atrocious.
It's terrible. We all know that. Sorry. All right. Sorry. I'm calling to order the public hearing for record number 25-02400, a definitive subdivision planned for the Owl's Nest subdivision located at 50 Flanders Road. This hearing is being held in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81T, and the subdivision rules and regulations of the town of Westboro. The public notice for this hearing was properly posted and published. The application and supporting materials are available for public review on the town's Permit Pro system and in the planning board office during regular business hours. Is, okay. Could you introduce yourself, please? And I see you have a presentation.
Good evening. Barry Yatchison with WDA Design Group representing John and Josiah Rich for a subdivision proposed off of Flanders Road. It's proposed a four-lot subdivision. One of the homes will be raised. The other one will be three new lots that are proposed in that development. This particular development has gone through significant design and review. It has gone through the preliminary design and approved by the Westboro Planning Board preliminary back in March of 2023. The, and most recently, a revised A&R plan has been submitted. End of June, June 17th, 2025. What you're looking at was a portion of this property in here, 52 and 50. 50 had a significant amount of the property up in this area. We, through the A&R process, amended for the new lot for this subdivision. What it ended up doing was creating, reducing some of the property for 52 and making it actually conform to the town's multifamily-sized lot zoning requirement. And then the 7.3-acre lot that we ended up subdividing and providing for this development. The existing plan over several years, probably seven or eight or 10 years, through the design process and manipulation, whether it's going to be six or seven or four-lot subdivision, there were significant test pits and so forth. Prior to this, there was the moratorium for sewer. So a lot of test pits were performed for the viability of having onsite septic systems for it. Since that time, we've, the moratorium has been lifted and under this project, we'll propose putting in municipal sewer overall. This is what we've come up with for four lots. This would stay the existing. Lot 2 is rehab of the existing dwelling, number 50, that would be then access off of this new Beehive Road. Lot 3, 4, and 5. The area is zoned as a residential, single-family, multifamily area.
So Barry, you're keeping the original house or you're taking it down?
That is coming down, unfortunately. So that would be this area here, this house would be rebuilt on that lot. And then three new, one, two, three new lots, new homes. Roughly, we proposed in here roughly a 40-by-80 type house or 30-by-60 for this lot here because of the smaller nature of the lot. We have proposed, under the preliminary design and under this design, three waiver requests that were granted under the preliminary. And those were the request for a reduced road width from the 30 feet down to a 24-foot road and road grade less than 6%. We're actually, well, greater than 6%, sorry, my bad. So we're actually, under the profile, the road would go from a 2% entranceway to a 7%. So it only went up 1% is what we ended up. But we did ask for a, under the preliminary, up to a 9%. But due to the mathematics of the road, the max we could get out of it would be a 7% road. And I'll show you that in a profile in a moment.
Wait, you said that at the entrance, it was going to be 2%?
Yep, I'll show you that.
And then we go immediately to 7% from there, and now we're talking about 9%?
I'll show you here in a second what I mean. One of the other criterias that we asked in the waiver was the entrance level area to Flanders, from Flanders on to Beehive Road to be reduced down to 50 feet. And I'll show you that here in a second. So in order to come off the road, we've got a 50-foot section that's at 2%, which meets the minimum. It shouldn't cause any problem with fire trucks or any truck that is of a lower nature to bottom out as they exit or enter off of Flanders Road. So that's a requirement of a certain distance to maintain a level, what they call a level area. That's the 2%. Then I have to transition up. And the distances here have to meet certain town requirements. So in order to meet those requirements, the max I could get to is a 7% grade up in the middle of the area, the average considered 7%.
It looks like there's almost a dip. Why not just kind of make it?
A dip where?
Like, right where the triangle is. Like, it's, it kind of 2% and then, you know, flatten, I don't know, and then goes back up. Can't you level that off?
The flat part's not your road, it's the curve at the top. And it shouldn't be a dip in there at all. It's just the way they, you have to transition from another curve to.
I was wondering if, yeah.
A reverse curve.
It might just be where I'm sitting, that it's tough to see.
Yeah, there isn't intended to be any, it's just the way the curve naturally comes in.
I was just wondering why you couldn't flatten it off, but if it's, if you can't, then.
I can't, mathematically can't. And then the same thing happens up at the top, up in here, trying to.
Do we have comments from engineering on this road? I mean, I don't.
This has been sent out for peer review and we don't have the comments back yet.
Oh, we don't. That's what I wondered, okay. Because, you know, I'm looking at this and I, the one thing I had, have had concerns all the way along on in this was, if anybody's driven by that property, you'll see that it's on the side of a hill essentially. So the question was how the road was going to work. And, you know, it's been reconfiguration, reconfigured a number of times to try to take this into consideration. But I want to make sure that engineering and peer review has had a, really a good chance to look at this, walk it, and make sure that we're not going to run into problems. Because the other thing that's going to happen is at some point, I'm assuming like most developers, they will come and ask to have the road dedicated to the town. So you've got to make sure that this is going to meet town regulations, if that's what a plan normally does. And so my concern, as much as anything else, is making sure that the engineering on this road is sufficient.
Absolutely, and it has been sent out for peer review. So as soon as we get those comments, we'll forward them to the applicant and the board. On the road, I believe you all have proposed it to be a private way? Is that correct?
That's correct. I was just going to say that it would stay and maintain. There's no intention of turning it over to the town.
That may not make it any less hazardous to those people that are living there.
Right. As I was getting to the follow-up, yes, the topography of the road does fall off from its neighbors in the back of 100th Road to Flanders Road. There is. Don't know if it shows up on this one. Some wetlands on the. Out in this area over here, a wooded wetland. It's mostly accumulation of water that comes off of the neighborhood in the back and breaks out in that area. We're proposing to, where the 100-foot buffer falls on the property, but our intention is any work not, to not be within that 100-foot buffer. We have submitted plans and documents for a request for a determination with the Conservation Commission. Actually, it went in today. So we'll follow back up with that. But we need to go with this first before we get a determination from them. Following up with sightlines, the road, proposed road and the layout was shifted up the hill so that we provide enough site distance. We have more than enough site distance entering and exiting this particular property. Utilities, like I said, where sewer's going to go, municipal sewer, put a sewer pipe up there. It's got, will have water, municipal water. During the water installation, the rehab and upgrade of the water main a few years ago, a stub was left for this development that we'll tap off to on that. And then water, sewer, gas, electric will be proposed up there. The drainage and onsite drainage, as you pointed out, Hazel, it is on a hill and will be challenging during construction. We've proposed a bunch of temporary basins and stuff that I'm sure the peer review will be reviewing our storm order report and so forth. But in general, there's a, we propose a collection of a lot of the water from the road and the neighborhood up here into a detention pond out behind here. And then some of the coming down and collecting before it goes on to Flanders Road in some catch basins to a treatment unit to an underground storage and containment area with a high-water overflow into the existing culvert there. And then each home will have its own onsite infiltration unit meeting the town and DEP requirements. And then typically a mailbox, community mailbox for the neighborhood. And each home will have its own independent light at the end of the driveway as required by the town's requirement.
Will there be an address at the end of each driveway? A number?
Yes. I believe the numbers have already been chosen for the development, so. I believe it goes 1357. It goes 1357 up through the development. Temporary basins and drainage during construction of the road and start laying out of the houses.
We don't have any engineer, we, you've been, we're waiting for conservation, engineering, I mean, conservation, engineering, both these projects and peer reviews. Looking forward to, so we still are kind of a long way away from approving something like this till we look at these comments as they come in.
Yeah, we did receive some comments, including from the fire department, the health department. And then conservation made comments that it would require an RDA. But we're waiting for the additional comments. That was correct, yeah.
And then just following up, typical landscape screening up in these areas here. Didn't see a landscape plan that may have skipped my plans here, so I apologize on that. I thought it was in there. But I know we were talking, putting in shrubbery and stuff in this area to keep the screening for the neighbors down below. And the intention is to clear as little as possible up in these areas so it doesn't need to be all cleared out enough to put the homes and a yard in, so. They forget enough screening along in there, maintained. It is noted that on the top over here and along the front, there was an easement for a walk-in path. It's our understanding that the walk-in path, while it's there as an easement, there's no intention of building out on that at the moment. So this, that pretty much concludes my thoughts on the neighborhood. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Is the board have any questions? I am going to hold my questions until we've had the reports back from conservation, the peer reviews and others. I think this is somewhat preliminary, as far as I can see, from my viewpoint, on this application, since we don't have the information, I think we really need to evaluate it.
I just had one question, and you don't have to have the answer for this now, but do you know what the slope of the driveways currently would be as proposed?
They would be below, it's designed for below-your-town requirement. I don't know off the top of my head what they were.
That's why they're so long, right?
That's why they're so long, right?
Yeah, exactly, that they have their level area coming off the road, level area at the driveway, and then the minimum.
Okay, I think we'd still like to know what the percentages are on it.
Get you that.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? If not, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this application? Yes, sir. If you could state your name and keep to your two minutes?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
My name is Brad Avragon, um, I live at 21 Hundreds Road, so I'm a direct abutter to Lot 4. I have some concerns as far as, number one, is, is there, you know, what sort of buffer is there going to be between my lot and, and the Lot 4 lot? As far as trees and natural things like that sound buffers. I also have some concerns, my understanding is that that area has a lot of ledge, so they'll be dealing with a lot of heavy equipment back there. I'm concerned about any subsequent damage that may happen to my home as a result of building and construction and heavy equipment back there. So that's, that is a big concern. And I was also curious, you mentioned the easement. My understanding is that's with the, the, I, I, sorry, I apologize, I don't remember the name of the path, but the, the trolley path that's going through the town, the air trolley, you, you know what I'm referring to?
The wall?
Yeah, that, my understanding comes right out, runs right along that edge right there. So that walking path, right now, kind of butts up to my lot and then, and then it kinda goes through there, so I don't know. I feel like it's gonna be encroaching on both, both sides, so I, you know, I obviously have some concerns. Obviously, they can't address that, but with what's gonna be happening in this particular area. So that's a, that's a, a big concern of mine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience that I can comment on this application? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Jim Bartley, and I'm the husband of Stella Bartley, 42 Flanders Road. And we're butters to the fourth, or the, the Lot 5. And we're right below it. And there's a couple of things we have. We have plenty of water coming in our yard and down in our cellar too. And I was gonna question that, and I was wondering, again, the buffer zone between the foundation of the, the, the building shown and our lot line. Thank you.
This is one of the reasons we're waiting for more information from Engineering and Conservation on the basis. Did you have a question, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I had one question. So Josh Feliciano, 40 Flanders. Uh, so if you, I think you said that there'd be a water basin, retaining water up over on the left side of, the far left side, is that, do I understand that correctly, or?
Yes.
And when you say there'd be a water basin, how, I guess, close to, you know, so I have that triangle, 40 Flanders, what's the, I guess, distance or buffer zone from, I guess, let's say that basin to the, you know, landline?
From the property line to about here, it's about thirty feet.
Okay, so you guys are cleaning pretty much everything to all, to all the butters?
To, to the top, yeah.
And then you said the wetlands is also in that top corner?
Way in the back corner over in here.
How far down, I guess, does that wetlands come? You said you're gonna do a hundred feet, so, away from it?
A hundred feet gets us, so if the wetland flags are over here, this is my wetland, hundred-foot line.
So the water basin will go just where, you know, just outside of the...
Actually, it looks like the wetlands are in the back of your property.
Correct, yeah, I get a lot of water back there.
Do you?
Yeah, tons of water. So that's also my concern, is when you guys go and, you know, agitate all the ground, you know, what might happen with all that excess water? And when you slope it, you know, which way are you guys gonna be grading it and all that stuff? If all of a sudden we did have tons of water, let's say now, coming towards our property, what recourse, I guess, do we have if?
Well, that's one of the reasons, as I said, we're waiting for information on this.
Okay.
Okay, but thank you for bringing up that concern.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jenny and Barry, but if this is under Mass Stormwater Handbook standards, they would have to treat all the water onsite. So whatever can, is going offsite now, currently in the existing conditions, can, can keep that same level, but no new amount of water can go offsite. And so that's what the peer reviewer would be reviewing, to make sure that those calculations are, are accurate. Right, exactly.
Are there any other questions from board members for Barry? If not, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing till our next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll have more information by the next hearing, if not, we probably will continue it further.
Pardon me, could you repeat the date we heard?
October 7th is our next meeting. But if we don't have the information in the peer review, there's really no point in us entertaining it, so we probably would just continue it at that time to our following meeting. Next thing on our agenda, Alan. Nice to see you.
Good to see you all. Did I lose the connection? Yeah, hold on. I'll reduplicate. Oh, I didn't. I'm gonna change this, okay.
Alan, this is just a presentation for us tonight, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, you're not, you're not asking for any action from us?
No action that would require a vote, just consideration of a working relationship related to this part, related to this project.
Okay.
Good evening, my name's Alan Falcon, I currently serve as Chair of the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust. And we are here this evening to present an introduction to a project, really a program for affordable housing here in Westboro that we've, for the time being, named HB Cottages. Because I'm so creative in naming, the H stands for High Street Extension and the B stands for Beach Street. So, very quickly, I'll go through, just a reminder of who the trust is, what we do, our guiding principles, you're familiar with them. A project overview and scope, talk about the process we're following, following in the timeline because it's unique and that we believe this is the first friendly 40B development that Westboro will be dealing with or has dealt with. Talk about next steps, we'll present some initial draft concepts, and I'm open to questions or feedback at this point, but there's an ask about some ongoing feedback and direction from the planning board as we look to design, finish the, do the design work on the project to set the parameters for the RFP. So the Housing Trust's mission is to provide for the creation and preservation of affordable housing units in Westboro for the benefit of low and moderate income households and to support efforts to improve housing affordability for our community in general. And the picture there, by the way, is our project at 3 Baylor Avenue. The auction for that property, I'm sorry, not the auction, the lottery for that property is happening at 3 PM on Thursday. And there are forty-six eligible households entered in the lottery as of last week, so there may be more at this point. So there's definitely demand. So we have our seven guiding principles, as I walk through the project and talk about our process a little bit, I hope you feel that we're honoring those guiding principles as far as how we wanna operate as a trust and work as a cooperative member, not only for the benefit of the people who might live in the housing we help create or preserve, but the immediate neighborhoods and the community and the town in general. So this project, our real goal here is to develop net new affordable housing for ownership here in Westboro. It is two parcels in one project, and we understand that each parcel will need to go through processes independently as parcels, but we're doing it as one project for a couple of reasons. The biggest reason is, combined, the two parcels should have more than ten units, and that creates eligibility for certain types of state and federal funding that might use to help with the subsidy and the development of the, of the property and the projects. It also gives us a con, for this type of project, it gives us a pretty significant economy of scale with respect to construction costs. As, there's, you know, an economy of scale around design and build with respect to the project. Additionally, the cost of managing the sale of an affordable home is roughly the same as the cost of managing the sale of ten or twelve affordable homes. The lottery process, you know, the, the LIP application and LEU process, it's the same whether it's one unit, five, ten, or twelve. So we want to take advantage of those economies of scale. That said, we are sensitive to density in the neighborhoods we're moving into. I'll talk about, we had our first public input session, where we presented some concepts on September 10th. We got some fairly robust feedback with respect to densities, and we're already starting to define some alternatives that will ask our design company to go back and assess for some lower density and some different layout options, and I'll get into that in a moment. Our guidance for the project comes from the assessments that the town has done, the master plan, expanding affordable housing opportunities, the senior needs assessment, affordable ownership option for those wanting, wanting to age in community. I'll note that affordable units that are ownership for fifty-five plus, there are currently three in Westboro. And so we don't have much of that type of inventory, so we're looking to include that in. And our housing production plan talks about a need for starter homes as well as senior downsizing opportunities. So we definitely see a need for this type of project. The project scope we were thinking was a total of twelve to twenty units, a mix of single-family and duplex buildings and a mix of starter home for family and senior fifty-five-plus housing, roughly a two-thirds, one-third mix, family, senior. And we would be eligible to do a Westboro resident preference for the units. And seventy percent of the affordable units, up to seventy percent of the affordable units can have a Westboro resident preference, is allowed by current regulation. Given the feedback we got, we're more likely to be closer to twelve or possibly as low as ten, or hopefully not fewer than ten units. I don't think we'll be at twenty units for the, the project, for the density. And I'll talk about, when you see the drawings, you'll see why, and we can talk about it. This process is gonna be a little bit different. Technically, this is a 40B development, we're asking for zoning variance and waivers specifically in exchange for the value to the town of having permanently deeded affordable housing, which is the same standard of requirement for what's typically known as a hostile 40B. What makes it friendly, first and foremost, is because Westboro is below, above the 40B threshold of ten percent, the decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals with the comprehensive permit is final. The project could not be appealed to the State Housing Appeals Committee. And so there's a different sense of leverage and process there. We also like to think that it's friendly because our goal is to work with multiple boards and committees and the community, so that by the time we even go to the RFP, we have a sense of the mitigation and the nature of the development and the restrictions and requirements we wanna put on any developer to deal with issues such as traffic, density, setbacks, noise, you know, visibility, privacy, things of that nature, that help with the quality of life and how these developments can fit within the specific streets and neighborhoods they're in while still providing the broader need for affordable housing and the benefits to the community. And that's part of the reason why we're here today. And, and hopefully at our meeting, on the 10th, we put people at ease that the reason we're talking about it is not because we have plans that we're ready to go to permitting for. There's a much longer process, which I've outlined here. Work to date, we own the property, we've been conducting site investigations and developing concepts of looking at density options, layout, things of that nature. The site investigations have been around easements, wetlands, conservation. Knowing that there was a tannery adjacent to the property on Beach Street, we've done some initial site licensed professional work to make sure we're not stepping into something that's gonna require too much additional cost, or at least if it does, we know what that risk is and what's involved there. At this point, we feel we have a pretty good sense of what's buildable as far as usable land on the property, that we can start to work from in layout concepts.
Do you actually own the property?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
So you've bought both these properties?
Yes, well, so High Street Extension was transferred with the support of town meeting. Yeah, from, by the select board under the authority of town meeting. And we purchased Six Beach Street as part of a bankruptcy proceeding that the homeowners at that time were going through.
Okay.
And that was a, that was a, it was a public sealed bid, you know, one shot. Put your bid in an envelope and they opened one and high bid got, high bid received it. And at the, at the time, we bid a few thousand dollars over the assessed value, the property is appreciated. And the assessed value is over, at this point, higher than our investment in it. That's important, because if we ever decided we didn't wanna build on it, wanted to dispose of the property, as you may be familiar, oftentimes in municipal property, the benchmark is the assessed value as far as what would happen with it. And so we're, we've protected ourselves and covered the investment there. When we look at our timeline, this summer, we spent refining the concepts and finishing up some of that preliminary site work. This fall, our goal is to develop the RFP. The way these projects, the way this project will work and the most cost-effective way to do it is for us to write an RFP, and that includes a purchase of sale sample and a land development agreement that specifies what needs to be built and the constraints put on that project. And that's why it's important that we get other boards and committees to provide input, we get input from the community, so that when we set firm requirements that we would not approve a bidder if they don't meet, as well as things we have preferences for, but would allow some variation as far as scoring the RFP responses, we wanna make sure that we're baking in to the potential development, the mitigation, the contingencies, the concerns of the town, boards and committees, and of the community. And so we're here very early in this process. This, so this fall, we're looking to develop the RFP, which is establishing our criterion preferences. We want guidance from the planning board and others, and we've already started community engagement. The goal would be sometime this winter to release the RFP. Ideally, the latest we would want to do that would be in January. Even if it ran to early February, we think we'd still be able to hold to this timeline. That's a six, that's really a ninety-day process for us, once we release the RFP, to bid, open, settle, and then close on the property. So, late winter, early spring, there we'd select the bid, then we enter the traditional pre-permitting phase. We have concepts, and we're paying for engineering work on those concepts that allow us to set the criteria, but each bid will in fact have their own specific design that they're proposing, their own layout, engineering documents, things of that nature. And they need to go through the same permit, you know, through the formal pre-meriting, pre-permitting process. Now technically, they need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and apply for a comprehensive permit. As part of the RFP, we are requiring that they get advice and consult from other boards and committees. And so part of what we're asking is for the planning board, you know, whether it's a subcommittee or a representative to work with our working group to provide input into the scope and the requirements and limitations we bake into the RFP. And once there's a winning bid, to also then look at the proposed project and basically say, if the planning board were issuing the permit, what would you want to see? Or what would you want to... include, so that that can be shared with the zoning board of appeals as potential content for the comprehensive permit. And the goal is that the trust with the developer, the planning board, the community, there are other boards involved, we're in a historic district, so on Beach Street, so, well, the nature of this project doesn't require us to work with them, we've already started conversations with them about review and guidance of design elements to maintain the historic nature of the community there and to honor, to honor the historical district designation and what makes it special.
But this will all depend on whether the ZBA gives you...
This is, this is all pre-comprehensive permit. What we're hoping for is that if the planning board said, if we were going to issue a permit, we would want, we would require A, B, C, and D, that we have the developer agree to that, and the, and in the comprehensive permit application, those conditions are included so that with a statement that says, you know, the planning board feels that these conditions are appropriate and the developer agrees with them, so that we have agreement. If you think back with the issue with the Del Webb development with Pulte, there was agreement between the town and the developer with multiple boards and committees involved, and they went to the planning board and said, both parties agree that their interest is served if your ruling has these elements in it. And that's what we're looking for, is to provide the zoning board of appeals the ability to include conditions that this board and other boards and committees would want to see, and that the developers aware of and agrees are reasonable, and that they wouldn't object to if it was in the comprehensive permit. There's a couple of reasons to take this approach. Well, it seems like we're putting a lot of boundaries on the product, on the project for developers upfront. It actually provides a level of certainty. Because we're addressing issues, it takes some of the risk out of the development. So if the developer knows, for example, that this board has recommended certain, is willing to accept some variances and setback, but set certain requirements for those, and that's a requirement of the RFP in their design, their risk that at design, if it meets that requirement, is rejected later is significantly reduced. And so we're sort of prethinking some of these issues. The fact that their certainty is greater, their risk is lower, lowers the cost of the bids, and this is following best practice guideline from the Mass Housing Partnership as far as managing this type of project and what to do. So pre-permit work will be more community engagement involving town boards and committees and really having a finalized project design and all the conditions, criteria that are, have been agreed to among the different entities so that the developer at that point could submit with hopefully support from the various town boards and committees in the community, the comprehensive permit application to the ZBA. At that point, we know there's public hearing involved, that could run multiple sessions. We expect it could run the full six months, given that this is sort of the first time through the process for a friendly 40B, which means the permit would be issued in the spring of '27, and building would start hopefully shortly thereafter. The one component that's the hardest to map out on this is the financing. We have ideas on programs that are available today to help finance the project. We're two years away from shovel in the ground, and most financing can't be finalized, at least until the permit application is applied, applied for, and some will wait for the, the permit to be issued. Okay, so the status, as I mentioned, we own both parcels, we've been doing quite a bit of investigation work. We have our preliminary concepts, we've taken through two rounds of the business one-stop sessions and have, in both cases, modified the designs and refined those concepts. September 10th, we had our first community engagement. We did okay, we will do things better next time from how we organized and managed it, but we definitely identified concerns from abutters and other neighbors for both projects, predominantly around density and setbacks, which relates to privacy, noise and light pollution, and traffic and traffic safety concerns. Since that meeting, we've received two or three emails with people raising other concerns or emphasizing or providing information to clarify this. We're currently actually taking that information, and one of the things we've committed to for Beach Street, that parcel is to come up with one or two alternate design concepts at lower density, and specifically, a number of people who are there on the 10th asked that we look at a townhouse contiguous on the back of the property type scenario, and I can show what that might look like. So here we are, soliciting input and support to guide us in the RFP process. In addition to here at the planning board, we'll be meeting with the Conservation Commission. Our goal there, particularly for High Street, which has a small amount of wetlands on one corner of the property, that they give us the demarc line or the buildable box, if you will, that we can define for potential bidders and say, don't plan, don't plan on doing anything outside of this box, and here are the restrictions. The developer will still need to go to the Conservation Commission for orders and conditions, and that'll be very clear in the RFP, but at least we can provide them some initial guidance, hopefully from the Conservation Commission on what they feel would be acceptable, and then get into the details. The Historical Commission, we're looking for guidance on design and style of building, exterior facade, landscaping if need be, what, so that Beach Street fits within the historical nature of the Vinton Hill Historical District. We'll be looking to the select boards for support because eventually these will go to the select board as local action units as well, and the community, and we're hoping that by the time we issue the RFP, we're going to have consensus from the general consensus, even with the community, on the scope and nature and the layout and potential design of the project. We're still looking at the affordability mix for financial reasons. Ideally, we'd like all, every single unit to be affordable. It may be necessary to be affordable at a 50% or 80% rate and have a couple or, you know, some units at market rate. That will be geared by some of the funding issues that, we're already working on financing and funding models for the project, and so we'll have a better sense of the affordability mix as we head down the road, and also the unit type mix. This is family housing, ADA accessible, any 55-plus restricted, any, if we want to dedicate any for veteran or other special needs, and the mix of studio, one and two-bedroom at this point. Currently, the size of units we're talking about, there's some debate among the working group. Personally, I don't think a three-bedroom would be feasible, given that we're talking potentially 1,400 square feet. We have a three-bedroom going up the two-story. On Baylor, the bedrooms are really small, so it's still an active point of discussion. We'll do the RFP, that'll have the final criteria, and then, as I said, we award the bid. The bid gets awarded with a purchase and sale agreement as well as a land development agreement. And as, this is similar to the process, it's identical to the process we used with Baylor Avenue, the land development agreement here also has, in addition to specifying all the restrictions, what they must do in developing the property, it includes the ability that should they fail, we have recourse to take the property back at no cost. They lose their, any money that they've invested in the property at that point. And those timelines that we build into the land development agreement can talk about time to start permitting, time to start construction, and time to complete, so we know that the project's going to move forward. And then it goes through the project permitting process, again, broad input and agreement so that we go to the ZBA with support from town boards and committees and the community. So we want, we're looking for two, two pieces of help from the planning board. First, we'd like to, as we continue to refine projects, be able to come in or have a working group of the planning board work with us to identify and prioritize conditions that you would put on a permit, if you were, if you were looking at this project and what you'd want to see, and also provide you with an opportunity to review the RFP prior to release. Once we have a winning proposal, again, pre-permitting, looking at the final plans from the developer and what's happening, and provide those inputs as well so that they can include anything that you feel is necessary in the comprehensive permit application, and sort of hopefully preempt some of the back and forth, you know, if you go in and the negotiation's done, there's fewer, there are fewer potential obstacles that can drag this out. And that would include hopefully a letter of support to the zoning board of appeals. So where, where are we with the draft concepts? I will tell you right now, these are outdated based on our September 10th meeting, but we don't, we haven't yet met to provide the new guidelines back to Waterman Design for updated concepts. So for High Street Extension, we had four concepts, we've narrowed it down to two, a five-unit concept and a seven-unit concept. Both are based on a 25-foot by 30-foot footprint, two-story buildings, these are single-family. And we've hit some of the major items that were pointed out to us in the business one-stop as far as snow storage, dumper, vehicle turnarounds for fire, ambulance, garbage truck, mailboxes, green space, and stormwater infiltration. The initial community feedback on this were concerns about the density, both in number of units and total number of bedrooms, which would relate to the number of people, traffic and speed on High Street Extension. I will note that both of these designs, we were looking to include enough parking spaces for guests so parking wouldn't overflow, wouldn't need to overflow onto the street, and there wouldn't, on any regular basis beyond street parking. In fact, early on, one of our initial designs had 11 perpendicular spaces right off the road, because we were told the planning board doesn't like 12 or more perpendicular spaces, but we nixed that because again, the traffic and the impact on the neighborhood. There's concern on High Street, given the age of the surrounding buildings and the fact that there's fill work that has to be done, that property apparently was used as a gravel quarry and rock pit. So at one point, it was excavated out, and then another point, somewhere, whether it was the town or someone else decided to fill part of it in with giant boulders that probably came from somewhere else in town. And so there's concern about any sort of vibrations from the rock work that would need to happen and the, and the compression of the soil as we fill, and the risk of that to neighboring foundations and buildings. Visibility and privacy concern, are we going to have 20-foot streetlights? Where are the headlights going to shine when people drive in? Are they, are bedroom windows going to be, you know, looking into each other, things of that nature? And so we're looking, and we'll be providing this feedback back to Waterman Design. So this is the first concept, it's five units. As you can see, a lot of parking, not much, you know, we're generally for the buildings within the setback, what would be setback ranges. For the property, there's ample turnaround, it's, you know, through the corner there for the fire truck, for the, for the tower unit and fire engines to back out and pull out. The, the peak of the roof and all of those buildings are reachable by the tower unit from the fire truck as well, so, so they have the extension for it. The two units in the upper-left corner may be a little too close to the wetlands, we'll get guidance on, you know, we'll get further guidance on that from the Conservation Commission that had provided us some initial guidance, it's within that initial guidance, but the visual look, we still have concerns. We're maintaining and enhancing the visual barriers with the heavy forest and plantings around the perimeter. And so this is, this is one concept of how we might fi, fit five units with a surplus of parking so that visitors aren't parking on High Street Extension. And then here is a seven-unit mockup, just to show that if we really wanted to, we could fit it in. This one varies a little bit, obviously, in the layout, and that light green is permeable pavers to minimize the impervious space and allow for drainage. And I believe both projects have stormwater filtration systems under the roadway that would have to be built, or be built into the area that we're filling in to capture stormwater so we don't flood our neighbors or cause any problems for them.
So Alan, if that was a gravel quarry, is there an issue with infiltration? Has there been like test pits or any tests for stormwater infiltration on that site done?
We, so the layout of the land, we haven't seen it. We know that in the center of the pit, there's about, there's a small area that after heavy rain will have a deep puddle, just because of the shape of it, but we haven't seen, there was some test digging, particularly also at one point, we were assuming we were going to have to be on septic, and so we haven't seen any evidence of infiltration.
I guess my concern...
The site's all sand and gravel, so designing an infiltration system shouldn't be a real challenge.
Okay. My concern is just if, if the site isn't great for infiltration and you have to expand the stormwater management underground, what does that do for your site design? But if it's, if it's not an issue...
I think, let me, yeah, these, so these two, these two designs don't have the underground infiltration system, other designs did, had, and had septic under the paved area, which means if something goes wrong with the septic system, it's a really expensive fix. So these, these are just the two initial concepts. We got a lot of feedback on this. We'll be doing another, another round of revisions, either one or two more concepts for the property in the next round, again, to get more input back from the community and let them know how we're responding to their, to their concerns. So Six Beach Street, this is again the same footprint, two-story buildings, these are two family units, and so at 750 square feet per unit, we are looking at studios and one bedrooms at this point. We don't have enough space, 750 feet isn't large enough to build a two-bedroom. I mean, technically, there are people I knew have 750 square foot, two-bedroom apartments. EOHLC will not certify them as affordable at 750 square feet with two bedrooms. And so we're still looking at that and whether we want a lower density, larger footprint, larger units to get some two-bedrooms on this site. Again, an extra number of spaces to deal with visitors and minimizing on-street parking, and a series of community feedback and concerns that we're preparing to address and for future design concepts with Waterman Design doing the work for us. The note with the density is that one of the members of the community suggested a very different design concept for the property, and we agreed to explore that as an option. There was some support for it from the community in general. So this is the, the 10-unit, five, the five-building, 10-unit design. The engineers built the loop road at the end because they thought kids love to do that and could ride their bicycles on it. There's been discussion at looking at putting a T there that would leave open field space for play, an outdoor recrea, you know, and private recreation space as an alternative, so long as it can be done with the turn angles that we need for trash removal, snow management, and fire trucks. Okay? And to give a feel, you can see in the lower-right corner near Beach Street, you can see the shadow of the current single-family home, and this design does go closer to the properly line than that. We're very sensitive to our abutter to the right, as we abut them on two sides, and so their request was very simply, if there's a building there, how can it be further away? Or at least no closer than the current house. So we'll bring that into the, into the design and future concepts. Here's another concept, this is 12. The general feeling is that this is pretty high-density. You know, we were aware of that, it's an option. Part of what we're looking at is how much can we build, taper that with what the community needs, what's financially viable, all those mixed. We did want to explore some high-density options. At the upper-left corner, the hash-marked parking is permeable spaces, it's additional visitor parking, as well as turnaround space for vehicles, for trucks. You'll notice that our property ends next to the apartment complex. We did speak with them about an easement for emergency vehicle egress. However, that would result in the removal of two parking spaces. Because their building, the mortgage holder for their building is US Department of Housing and Urban Development, we were advised that would basically take an act of Congress. And so we're not, we figured best to look at other approaches. And so we're not, we figured best to look at other approaches. So this option, I think the general feedback from the community is too much density and concerns about the layout as well. The suggestion was where the four units are in the back to maybe consider a contiguous row of townhomes or a two- or three-story, single-entry building is an option to leave most of the front of the property undeveloped. And so we'll be exploring that as an, as another option as we go through the next round of design and concept to see if it's something that works for the project and works for the community. Okay, so that's where we are.
Thank you, Alan.
Any questions?
I don't have any at the moment, mainly because I'm just waiting to see what the new concepts are going to be, and really, I think this particular project to me is one in which the abutters and the communities in which they're being put are the people that we should be listening to.
Oh, absolutely.
I think that's my general feeling about both of these projects because you're, you're in a residential neighborhood and you're putting in multifamily housing, and you want to make sure that this complements and is, carries the spirit of the community with it. I mean, it just, I'm concerned a little bit about Beach Street only because I was on the historical commission and I know, you know, those were, that's a special neighborhood. It was always known as a special neighborhood and, you know, it was made up of single-family homes, and so there are concerns, I'm sure, by the people that live in that area as to the kind of building that would go in there.
In, in fact, a member, a resident on Beach Street sent us an email today suggesting that rather than six buildings that are 12 units, that we do six, five or six buildings that are single-family. That from a density population, there may be a little less, a little different, but more within the neighborhood. The other thing that I don't, I'm not sure I ever, I really explained it clearly on the 10th, is that, you know, we sort of look at the guidelines for a project like this. And so we know, for example, that the fact that, you know, in one project, we have high-density multifamily housing is in a butter, and we have the apartment complex on Beach Street, that that, when you look at a project and you look at average density in the radius, that it skews at high. And that, so we're not, we're not basing our plans on, ooh, what's, you know, what's allowed or what's typical for, you know, when you start doing the average density calculations. We're more concerned about, you know, where's the balance between density, the, the purpose of the project, and what, what works for the community and the neighborhood itself.
I have a question. I guess, what's the, what's the makeup of numbers of, members of households that, like from a, like, from a need standpoint? I know not all of these people might live in Westboro now, but is it largely a need for single bed, one bed, two bed?
The, the demand, the data we have from the state is the demand is across the spectrum.
Yeah, okay.
Really, and they, and they look at, the state would prefer we were doing three- and four-bedroom homes for families in certain areas, but there's need across the board. We're looking at, you know, we're looking at the needs as expressed in the housing production plan, the master plan, and the townwide senior needs assessment, knowing that seniors, seniors who want to downsize and-
Right.
-age in community probably aren't looking, don't have the demand for three and four bedrooms.
Right.
Starter homes also tend to be, you know, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, rather than three, four, and five.
Right.
And that gets into also the overall affordability of the project and that the number of bedrooms will impact the eventual selling price.
Right. What's the general makeup now of affordable housing in Westboro in terms of single bed, two, three?
For actual affordable units?
Ed Bain Tribe, Thomas Rice Drive, one of the trustees. What we see now is affordable, there's, let me give you a couple of numbers. We're at, according to the state, 11.74% of-
Right.
... residents are residential units are affordable, and that cuts across single-family homes, condos, apartments, et cetera. Now, given that, there is, the way EOHLC counts some things, if 25% of a development such as, let's say, an apartment complex is affordable, you get credit for all of the units within that. So-
Okay.
You know, like Ellington West is an example of that, and we've done some things where we've encumbered funds to subsidize additional units at, connect the road that's being converted-
Right.
-from long-stay hotel to apartments. We've been able to buy up, so it's 25% there, as well as the Colangelo development at Westboro Shopping Center that's planned. We've also, you know, are in agreement, and we've encumbered those funds as, as well. And that protects us from, you know, a hostile 40B by staying above that 10% so that we, as a community, can decide how we best build housing. Now, given that, the 25%, if you actually take the number of units that are affordable, not what the EOHLC has, but the actual number, we are at about 5.5% of all the residential units, which is about 6,000 residential units throughout the town, you know, with the larger and larger group being in apartments, as you've seen the development along Route 9.
So to, to talk about the mix though, on the ownership side, the majority of affordable ownership units are two and three, two and three-bedroom, and we, we can pull those. Only three of our ownership units are age-restricted in any way. It's 55-plus. Those are in the condos on Park Ave, actually.
Yeah. Yeah, they're actually stagecoach circle, which we said-
It's the abutter who spents might be on the wrong property.
Yeah.
Stagecoach.
Yeah. The apartment mix, we can, we can get you numbers. It reflects-
I was just curious, yeah.
It reflects the ratio of one, two, and three bedrooms in the complexes and in the buildings themselves. So if a complex is built to be, you know, 60% two-bedrooms, 20% one-bedroom, and 20% three-bedrooms, then that will be the mix of the affordable units in that complex. Up until recent, up until our current inclusionary zoning, there was, there were no definitive guidelines, to my understanding, for fully ADA accessible units. It's now 25% of affordable units need to be ADA accessible.
And sorry, one, one more question. Are these to, for purchase or rent or mix?
We're looking for purchase.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We want to, we, we think both would be appropriate as condo associations.
Sure.
Just because it's a shared land, it is a little higher density, and it would be a way, especially for seniors who are looking to downsize, they don't want to deal with maintenance, et cetera. So if you could provide that, you know, so for snow plowing, mowing-
Right.
-general maintenance, at least the exteriors, you could, you know, makes more sense to do as, as an HOA for that. Has a lot of benefits-
Yep.
-to that, and we would, we would probably subsidize the, you know, the legal creation of those with the, there was also one other point where there was recently an affordable house on Indian Pond Road that's, was put up for resale. It's somebody who had bought it when it was first built, and now they are moving out of state, and they're selling it, and I believe there's like 20 applicants or so for that one property. They found somebody, I mean, the, the listing agent-
Resales generally go first come, first served.
Yeah.
So they had, they were expecting an eligible household to sign the PNS with a firm close date this week. If that doesn't happen, they have 15 certified eligible households on the waitlist.
So you can see what, you know, the demand for, that's a-
Ownership.
-three-bedroom home, but it's not a real large home. It was, you know, built back in, I think, the 60s.
Well, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, are you looking for comments or just questions?
Comments?
Opinions?
Comments, opinions?
I have opinions. I do not like the designs for Beach Street. Okay. I would encourage, I, I don't mind the density. I think that neighborhood, and I lived in that neighborhood for, I don't know, nine years, the densities would be consistent with that area, especially with that multifamily. I just don't like all the pavement. I don't like that circle. I think that's a great neighborhood for kids to ride bikes around, so if that's the reason that you'd want to put that circle in, I would say that's not a great use of that land. I'd rather have it be open and have, you know, gardens or whatever. I would encourage creativity and, and design for those types of developments and see if we can get a, a more creative type of housing design. Yes?
John, are you suggesting architectural diversity?
Uh, not necessarily architectural diversity, though I think the architectural-
There's, there's a lot of pavement.
There is a lot of pavement. I think the architectural, architectural design, I would, because it's historic district, I'd want to see traditional historic type of architecture. I'm talking about layout-wise. It just, it seems like a lot of pavement for not a lot of housing, and it just seems like not a very efficient use of that land where you could do something a little bit nicer, right?
So a, a couple of things we're concerned you'll notice, sort of at the bottom of the L, there's that dotted line, and it's hard to read what it says there. That is a very old, very healthy maple tree.
I'm, I'm sorry, where, where is this?
Above the first two units from the street.
Yeah.
You see that odd shape?
Yeah.
That is, I don't know if the term's historic, but it's an ancient maple tree that's actually very healthy and in good condition that we want to preserve.
Yeah, no, I, I-
And so it's like-
That would be great.
So we're curving the road around it, but I agree that there's a lot of pavement there. Part of that was concern about parking and pushing parking onto Beach, which is a narrow street.
Yeah.
Have to look at the height, too. I mean, I think that's another thing that, I mean, there are all sorts of things that go into doing something that kind of fits in with the neighborhood, and so you don't want something that's going to just hit people in the eye. You want something that-
Absolutely.
-builds into the rest of the neighborhood. So you don't want, I mean, you said one person suggested more a townhouse-type complex.
Back away from the road.
Yeah, exactly.
So you wouldn't see it.
Yeah. And then you'd have, and, I mean, the thing is, if you could preserve more green space towards the front-
Okay.
-of coming down to, to the street, which could be used by the neighborhood as such, as well as the, the, I mean, just to have some benches that people can, you know, if you're walking your dog and you want to go sit in a bench for a few minutes, or, you know, you want to meet someone with a cup of coffee, that would be a real benefit to the neighborhood, having something like that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, more green space you can find, the better off we are because once you've lost it, it's gone.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would agree with that, but also some ideas, just kind of brainstorming here. Having a, a unit that has a garage for parking spaces to take some of that parking off of the surface level and put it under the building or otherwise inside the building, if you could potentially redesign the roadway so that maybe you could have two units front on Beach Street and act like typical residential units that are on the road, and then the other driveway goes to the back and serves other, other units, just ideas. But I think just with the way that neighborhood is, that is a lot of pavement, and I think it's going to just feel weird and not similar to the, the rest of the uses in the area. Because even that multifamily, we walk past it, it doesn't seem like it has a ton of pavement on it, and I know it's got a big parking lot in the back.
Right.
But it is pretty green in the front, and it's, you know, pleasant to go past. The local preference, can we, I know you were talking about Westboro residents, but I would also like to expand that to Westboro residents and people who work in Westboro.
Okay, so let me clarify. So when you say it's a Westboro resident local preference that generally includes Westboro residents, people who work for the town, people who work in town-
Usually one category it covers all.
Yeah, and it can also include, you know, it also can include other categories such as veterans, people with certain disabilities, and certain single-family, single head-of-household families.
Right.
And so there's a whole set-
That's fine, then, yep.
-that comes into it.
And then the last one might be the most controversial. I don't like age-restricted housing. I think it separates ages. I think you have communities that need a diversity of ages, and if we're, if we're taking 55-plus and putting them in their own units and not incorporating them into the rest of the community, the community suffers, and those, those residents suffer. So I would advocate against any age-restricted units.
I don't, I don't disagree with that assessment of age-restricted communities. A, a project like this where we have, let's say, five buildings, we'd probably have two being age-restricted and three not.
So what's the purpose of having them age-restricted then?
Because there's a specific need for people over 55 to have a, or-
But how would those, how would those people not be served by non-age-restricted, how would they not be served by non-age-restricted units?
It increases their ability to qualify in the lottery or for resale.
But I, I think-
It narrows, it narrows the lottery pool, is effectively-
I, I get that.
And, you know, it's, it's the, you know, it's the issue. The other thing is that we can, it means that we would able to be able, we would be able to say we have X number of Westboro resident-preferenced age-restricted units, which ensures that we have some units that will be available for Westboro residents who are look, who are seniors looking to downsize.
That may be true, but I mean, I do agree with John on this is that, you know, the more, particularly the downtown area, that we can mix older people and younger people, those with children, those that are just moving into the community, I think you build a stronger community, so.
Absolutely, which is, which is why if we have the age restriction in the units, it wouldn't be High Street is 55-plus and Beach Street is family.
Yeah, but I, as I said, I wouldn't want to, I mean, I, if I were a resident, I would prefer to live in a building that had, you know, that wasn't age-restricted. I don't want to live with a lot of people that are my age. I mean, I, I want to live with people that are younger, you know, that to me is important. That's, that's what keeps people going. So I think the mixture is the important part as much as anything else, and, you know, as far as age-restricted go, you've got to be very careful about that because, as I said, you don't want one building that's all age-restricted. I mean, that's, you know, that doesn't work.
Yeah, I think in this, I completely agree with that. I mean, I live in a, two cul-de-sacs is Thomas Rice Drive, and one of the things my wife and I like is that there's different age groups, you know? We're on sort of the, you know, the older end of, of the, the spectrum, but there's others, you know, there's kids, I'd love to see the kids playing out there, as our kids did, and we're seeing that. There's been a turnover, but I think that's a vibrancy, you know, that's needed, you know, to keep people just, you know, as a real community. And in this, the, the benefit for, for some seniors is it's walkable to downtown. That's why we're very conscious of that, and, and also the fact that, you know, we've seen that from all the studies that we've done, and one of the things I, I do in my copious spare time as I retire is I do taxes for seniors. AARP has a program, Tax Aid, where we, I do it three days a week, different communities, different senior centers, and I see these people coming in and they are living on so little money. It's, it's just frightening, and, you know, anything we can do to try to help seniors on very low incomes, the better off we will be as a town, I believe.
And I don't disagree about that. I just, you know.
I just, I, I wonder if we, I mean, it's getting late and I, you know, I sort of-
We can come back.
Appreciate, right, I appreciate presentation, and, you know, I see what you're kind of looking for us for, but-
Well, and this is exactly, this is why we're here tonight.
Yeah, we can get more information, I know, through Jenny, who, Jenny, and I think, Kristen, do you attend their meetings? Yeah, so we, we get a lot of feedback, which will help us, and then, you know, we're certainly willing to put your, put our ideas forth also.
And I just, and I just want to say, my comments came off a little bit harsh. I, I want to say I appreciate the work, all you guys have been doing.
No, they weren't harsh.
It's awesome to see, it's awesome to see this, you know, moving forward and, and all the stuff that you guys have done for the town. I think that's great.
We're here to get your feedback individually and as a board so that the end product is the best it can be-
Right.
-not only for the people living in these units, but for the butters, the neighborhood, the community. the neighborhood, the community, and the town.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wish you all the best in this. Jenny, have you got any planning updates?
I, I don't really have any new updates. We continue to work on the downtown project, where we should have some updated plans from our consultant to present to the planning board and the select board, probably after town meeting, I would expect. That's my only update.
Any report from board members on town committees? Our DBA, our design review committee meeting was put off, which is going to be today, will be put off till later in the month. So I have no report from them.
I attended my first CMR-PC meeting last week, and.
Was it thrilling?
It was thrilling. It was very well-attended. And someone there bought my beer because I had no cash. It was very nice. But we had a great, they, you know, had a lot of signage with different ideas for, for the communities, you know, taking feedback on what was important to, you know, all of us, and taking that back for the next meeting, so I'm good.
I, sorry, I have one quick update. So we actually canceled the CPC meeting that was supposed to be yesterday, because we don't have any applicants. So I'm going to suggest that we figure out a better outreach program.
Sounds good and probably true.
It'd be sad, yeah.
All right, let's see, minutes.
Any changes to the minutes of September 2nd or August 5th?
I had one on September 2nd. My name was not on the present list, so. It wasn't on the not-present list either, but it was there.
It just wasn't there.
I don't know, neither, neither here nor there.
Okay. Anything else? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of, of August 5th, 2025, and September 2nd, 2025, as edited?
So moved.
All in favor?
Okay. Our next meeting is October 7th.
Oh, I'll actually, I won't be here.
Yeah.
I know, I, I'll be in Atlanta for work all week. I know, I'm sorry, just.
Is that going to be a problem on voting on the Starbucks?
Did you purposely plan this trip to Atlanta so this was for Starbucks?
Atlanta, here I come.
I mean, they, I would give them the option to come back to the next meeting date in October, if you'll be available then.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to, because I don't think that we should, I think it'd be inappropriate, quite frankly, to vote without a full board. So that means that we'll just have to continue, we don't continue it, I guess. Now, we just.
Well, you had said just the next meeting, so.
We can continue it at the 7th. I would, because our next meeting, I have to, I believe, is the 25th of October?
No, you moved it to the 30.
I think she means the one after that.
Because town meeting is on October 21st.
Oh, we moved to the 21st.
28, thank you.
28. Because under the remand, we had 90 days in order to revote. I think we're still within the 90 days. Check with Justin because he said it would be easy to get it, an extension on that, but there was a stipulation in the remand that we had to make a decision within 90 days of the order of the court, and I don't have it in front of me, I don't know what the date of that was.
Would we consider moving that meeting?
Is it the date from the remand or the date from the opening of the hearing?
No, the date from the remand.
It's June, July 30th.
Okay, so.
August, September, October, end of October.
Um, not easily.
Yeah, I don't think we can move it. I mean, I think we've got to do this at a regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay.
So I would say at this point, we'll have to put it off to the end of October.
Are you available October 28?
Yeah, I'll be here then.
That is exactly 90 days.
Could we, could we potentially have Chris participate remotely? Why not?
No, we got, I mean, I, I just don't feel it's appropriate. I think we need everybody here, because one of the points that the attorney made was the fact that if anybody votes against this, they will have to give their reasons at the vote.
Okay.
And so I think, in particular, this vote needs to be in-person.
Chris, can you cancel?
I will make the 28th work. I haven't done the work.
Can you quit your job?
That's, no job. Yes, I will be here on the 28th.
All right.
That's exactly 90 days, Hazel.
What?
From July 3rd.
It makes me nervous.
We're just within the 90 days. I know, I saw that, because it's.
Yeah. Can we get like a confirmation from Justin on that?
Yeah.
I have made myself a note. I'll, I'll get confirmation.
Yeah, because that was one of the discussions we had yesterday about that, was the fact. But he said it'd be no problem getting an extension if needed be.
If, if I do need to zoom in, though, I can, I will make that work, so that we're not, not.
Yeah, I, I really feel it's important that we're all here for this vote.
In person or just?
In person.
Okay, yeah, I agree, but just checking.
Absolutely. All right, if there's nothing else, anything else, any board member would like to bring your attention tonight? If not, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Whoops. Thank you.